Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to the November 11th City Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is tonight, we welcome the members of the American Legion Post 121 Honor Guard, and they will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can we have roll call, please?
Bierstedt.
Here.
Bjork.
Here.
Carroll.
Here.
Downey.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Page.
Here.
Next are the approval of the minutes from the October 28th meeting.
I move approval.
Second.
First and the second on the minutes. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, next we have approval of the bills with Councilman Downey.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I move approval in the bills, the amount of $2,098,537.46, subject to comptroller.
Second.
First and second on the bills, questions or comments? All in order, or all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, uh, next is public comments, but I'm gonna change the order a little bit here. I'm gonna read, uh, I'm gonna read the proclamation for honoring the veterans on Veterans Day first, and then we'll go into public comments. So, whereas the willingness of Americans veterans to serve our country has earned them our lasting gratitude, and whereas on this, our nation's 71st annual Veterans Day observance, we celebrate and honor the brave men and women who have fought to protect the democratic ideas that are the foundation of our country, and whereas such service has required sacrifice, hardship, endurance, dedication, bravery, courage, and the highest level of patriotism. And whereas when the, when the Armistice ended World War I was signed on November 11th, 1918, more than 4.7 million Americans put down their arms and turned to the work of strengthening our nation. The day of that first global conflict was initially commemorated as Armistice Day, and whereas in 1954, Congress renamed the day as Veterans Day to recognize all those who have served in our armed forces. And whereas, in respect for and in recognition of the contributions our servicemen and women have made, Congress has provided that November 11th of each year shall be set aside as a public holiday to honor our nation's veterans. Now therefore, it be resolved, I, Dan Toll, and Mayor of the City of River Falls, to hereby call upon all my fellow citizens to recognize November 11th as Veterans Day, dated since 11th day of November 2025. And thank you guys for all your services, greatly appreciated, everything you do. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, could I take just a second?
Yes.
Um, I'd also like to, um, recognize some of the city employees. Uh, I know we have a few police officers who have, uh, who have served in the military. Uh, Mr. Carroll is a former Marine, I believe, and Mr. Page is a current Lieutenant Colonel.
Yep.
Uh, and then, uh, near and dear to my heart, my son-in-law, uh, is currently serving with the 82nd Airborne in Fayetteville, so, uh, just wanna recognize those and show my appreciation.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll give, if you guys, you guys wanna take some time to clear out, feel free. Don't blame me, you guys have had a long day. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Take care. Oh, thank you for everything. Okay. Next, move on to public comments. Yep, come on up.
Alright.
Like always, everybody has two minutes.
Uh, Benjamin Fox, 2529 Powell Avenue. It's sometimes difficult, well, number one, I want to thank the city, I love, Thanksgiving is my favorite holiday, mostly because I can eat and there's no gifts. Um, but it's also giving thanks for what you do, and it's the harvest season of a farmer. And so, when I think of that, I also think of 2018. 2018 is when the town of Troy and the city of River Falls was in a lawsuit in the middle of the street. And so, when people hear about this west, as development was in the west side of the city, realize that this is not something, it's been new, it was in court over the definition of where it began. It had involved the school district and everything else. And so, the city has been deliberate in moving to that area. It has not been, they have infield a lot of other things. So this isn't just some surprise that some people are like, hey, guess what, we're just gonna develop out there. It's been deliberate plan for 20 years, how they expand the city's boundaries. And with that, I also think it's important to focus on the next area. So as this western side is done with the next couple of years, that Main Street has failing sewers, has failing sewer lines. And so, the city will be leveraging what's happening out there to start rebuilding its urban core. So you're looking at complete redone of Main Street in, I think, five years now, they say. So I think it's really important to think of how this development goes, that you're not overly in the state or anything else. With that, I thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members, and thank you for your service, the people that have service, and, and of your sons and daughters. My name is Cheryl Hoffman. I'm part of the Woodridge Neighborhood Association. I live on 97 East Woodridge Drive. And since our last meeting, the builder was again asked to revise plans. And once again, the proposal still does not meet the city zoning code. The developer only removed one house, which shows little effort to comply in good faith. The original plan was for 74 homes. They are now asking for 92. That is nearly 20 more homes than originally proposed. And the lot sizes still deviate from the 75-foot standard required. When I asked about this, the city plan commissioner told me that the developer needs to make money. But financial gain is not a valid reason to ignore our city zoning laws. Title 17, Chapter 17 dot 24 dot 040, the R2 Multiple Family Medium Density Residential District. This zoning does not fit in with our existing neighborhood, where the surrounding lots range from a half acre to a full acre. When the J.P. Brooks representative spoke, his focus was entirely on the quality, quantity of homes, not the quality, and what they're building, or how it impacts the community. To reach that goal, they are asking to bend or break rules that are in place for a reason, to protect neighborhoods' safety and property values. If the council votes to allow this simply because a developer needs to make money, what kind of precedence does this set for future developments in River Falls? It tells every builder that the zoning code is negotiable, and that long-term residents and established neighborhoods no longer matter. We're asking the council to stand firm, uphold the city's own zoning standards, and require compliances before any further consideration is given. Thank you, and we do have 235 signatures opposing, uh, any deviation with this project. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good afternoon, council members. I've already signed in outside. My name is Tom McNamara. I live at 92A West Woodridge Drive, and I was here at the last meeting. And first of all, I'd like to hand this in as an official submittal. It's just, uh, I downloaded it yesterday from the city's website. It's the R2 zoning requirements in the map. So, I mean, you already know this, but I'm gonna speak to this. Who would I hand this to? So, going on what, adding on to what Cheryl said, when we looked at the map that the city, developer gave the city to give to us, we could not tell, the find, the print was so small and blurry, but it appeared that virtually every home deviated, every home and twin home deviated from the city zoning requirements for R2, which is 75 feet width, uh, front, you know, 75, 100 square feet lot, uh, setbacks, and I believe the city's own letter said that they deviated from that. I couldn't tell from the map, but it appeared virtually every, uh, house and twin home the developer proposed deviated from that. And, you know, when I look at the city's zoning purpose, it says, these are the general principles of zoning per the city. And so, from our perspective on Woodridge Drive, we're essentially R1. We would be an R1. So, okay, an R2, somehow that got in there, we'll deal with that. But at least it should meet the zoning requirements. And, you know, in the city's own words, the zoning requirements are set to protect, and this is 1704010F, "to protect and stabilize property values that could be undermined by the development of incompatible uses on adjacent or nearby property." This development as proposed does not do that. It says "to prevent overcrowding of land and unreasonable concentration of wealth, uh, population."
15 seconds.
This does not do that. "And to limit congestion on public streets, et cetera, and vehicle loading." This development does not do that as proposed. "And to provide adequate light air," and especially, my emphasis on privacy, because these will be backed up, okay? Alright, thank you. So, I won't go on too much longer.
That's fine, go ahead.
"To, uh, provide adequate light, air, and privacy, and to protect convenient access to the property." So when you look at all of our lots, as Cheryl mentioned, a half acre to an acre, the outline areas are just jammed up against our lots. That'll significantly reduce our privacy. And I, I guess I have a question. How was this zoned R2 to begin with? I mean, it's, it's too late to change that, but it, this has been inserted into our area. It's not like it's across the street, or, uh, next, in the next area over. It's just, so we have a really strong opinion that this is really not compatible, since it's thrust into the middle of our own homes. So, um, with that, I'll conclude, and also, if any of you are veterans, I'd like to thank you for your service, and anybody on the council. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Cheryl Johnson. I live at 836 Lee Roy Lane. Thank you all for being here and for what you do. I appreciate your service, and thank you so much for your service. I guess I'm kinda, I'm kinda con-
One second.
Yep, yep.
I'm so sorry. Yeah, please restart. I, I apologize. Sorry. I'm so sorry. Go ahead, you, we'll restart the clock for you.
Thank you. Um, so I'm confused as to why the city would consider having smaller lots than what is already, um, given in the city code. Um, I, I live on Lee Roy Lane. People fly down that street. It's supposed to be 25 miles an hour. They go much faster. I think as things get more crowded, and obviously, we're gonna have growth. That's okay. I don't wanna see more people flying down my road. And I also don't wanna see crushed-in housing that isn't with the code that's already there. So thank you. Thank you for what you do. We appreciate what you do for the city. We live in a beautiful city. And I hope you'll take our collective information into consideration.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm William Hanson, N8723, 1025th Street. Five years have passed since the October 4th, 2020. City Council directed shutdown of the Powell Falls Hydro and the draining of Lake Louise to inspect minor damage from the June 29th, 2020 Kenny Flood. At this time, the Powell Falls Hydro was producing over 500 kilowatt, 50,000. That's 50,000 kilowatt-hours of electricity each month. With the untimely shutdown and abandonment of the Powell Falls Hydro, the River Falls Electric Utility has lost the generation and sales of over 3 million kilowatt-hours of renewable electricity. This is a financial loss for our electric utility budget and our electric utility customers. As you consider your future actions regarding our remaining Junction Falls Dam and Hydro, now producing over 1 million kilowatt-hours of electricity each year, remember the negative impact hydro shutdown will have on our electric utility budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else have anything?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Mr. Carroll, Mr. Page, thank you for your service on this Veterans Day. It's greatly appreciated. Eric Ammison, 500 Marcella Court in River Falls. Uh, first, I wanna make a correction. I had stated before that in the Woodridge Development, that, you know, 1-3 acre lots, they are smaller than that from what they were, you know, a half acre and above. So, uh, just wanted to correct my mistake there at the previous meeting. So, um, it's been discussed already, uh, within the ordinances that we have. I, too, am confused how this ended up to be an R2, uh, zoned R2 medium density, given the surrounding homes that are in there. So, I don't know that I've ever heard an explanation to that. I don't know if that's something that anybody can give either now or later on during discussion. Um, but I also feel that, you know, there's, outside of this development in the Woodridge Drive area, there are 30 homes that connect to what is currently that field. 30 homes. Connected directly to those individuals' properties are 43 homes. That's a huge increase from what is currently there, from a half an acre and above. And to, to pack in that many homes into what is currently a rural subdivision, which would basically, like I said before, kind of an R1 or even less density than what the city has. My other concern is that now you're putting in another 49 homes inside that, 49 more units inside of that. So, that's above and beyond what the city has created within our ordinances, that for decades, we have worked with developers to fall within the ordinance that, that, I myself, as a former elected official, you as current elected officials, have worked with these developers to fall within those ordinances that we've created over time. And so, I ask you, council members, it's hard. It is hard to say no. And I know that we do have a housing study that says we, you know, we do need housing, we do need rental. But it's not a race to get there, okay? So let's follow the ordinances and the plans that we've created, that you've also created, and follow those ordinances, please. That's what I'm asking. Um, yeah, that's it. I'll give my two minutes. I'm being looked at. Thanks.
Anybody else? Yeah, come on up.
Cheryl Gilbertson, 93 West Woodbridge Drive. I'm gonna make it short. This new proposal that just, what we were just showed, it was wonderful. Took one house out of the whole area. What happened to the concerns on the last meeting about emergency vehicles, snowplowing issues, fires, whatever, that all of a sudden got dropped in the backseat? With one house that isn't even concerning about the major road that makes the loop? That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, move on. Uh, we'll close the council here and open up a public hearing. This is the second reading on ordinance 2025-06, appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of the City of River Falls, Wisconsin for the year 2026. Is there anybody, well, Josh, can you give his presentation first, and if there's anybody on it that has anything like to say now? We'll have that then. And this is our Finance Director, Josh Solinger.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, let's just talk some numbers here briefly. So, as you mentioned, this is the second reading slash approval of our 2026 budget. Just to briefly recap where we've been and leading up to now. Um, we had a workshop, um, similar to this, open to the public on September 23rd, where we reviewed the Long Range Fiscal Plan and Capital Improvement Plan. Then we had a budget workshop, uh, on October 14th, and then a first reading of the budget ordinance on October 21st, and now here we are for the second reading. So for budget summary, um, what you're being asked to approve is a budget totaling $66,635,649. Um, as we had discussed, and I had a bunch of slides the last time we talked about this, I kinda went fund by fund and talked about the major differences. I've just rolled it all up here into one table. So, compared to the originally planned budget for 2026, there are some updates. Um, for example, the general fund is about 100, $856,000 more than originally planned. That is because we're in a position fiscally to do some cash financing of the fire station that would have otherwise been borrowed for. Um, so that does increase the general fund budget. There's about $2.4 million more in our special revenue funds compared to what we originally contemplated. Um, and when I say originally contemplated, just for folks who may be listening, um, we adopt our budget in two years. So we had our 2025-2026 biennial budget that would have been adopted in November of 2024. So, since that time, there are some changes. So for the special revenue funds, that $2.4 million is primarily owing to the Library Foundation-funded building improvements. So there's an ongoing capital campaign that the library's conducting. And, um, in order to recognize what we hope is a very successful endeavor for additional improvements at that building, we're appropriating the budget for that at this time. There are no changes for our debt service funds. Our capital funds, um, are increased by about $9.3 million, and this is because of then the fire station construction. Um, so we have some, some cash financing, leaving the general fund, going to our capital funds. And then it is our capital funds where we actually then budget for the, the fire station project. So that's the difference there. And then in our internal service funds, it's about $300,000 more, and that is due to some IT infrastructure and facilities-related capital projects that we reviewed at the last workshop. So, a total increase of about $12.8 million owing to those reasons I just discussed. Uh, to briefly talk about our fund balance and just recap that, the blue bars represent the city council's policy for minimum fund balance, which is 40% of the upcoming year's budget. The dotted, or the dashed line represents the targeted fund balance of 50% of the upcoming year's general fund budgeted expenses. And then the orange bar is where we're at. So, we finished 2020, well, 2023 on not only exceeding our minimum fund balance requirement, but also exceeding our target fund balance requirement. And we believe that's going to hold true through the end of 2025. We don't know what kind of winter is in store for us that may impact our 2025 budget, but at this point, um, trends would suggest that that's about where we think we're gonna land in terms of unassigned general fund, fund balance. And then in 2026, you actually see that bar drop. Now that's because of the cash financing for the fire station. So, um, we obviously work to seek strategic opportunities to deploy cash when it exceeds 50% is what our understanding of the council is from our fiscal plan discussions. And then even whenever we're exceeding the 40% minimum, we also look for opportunities that the council may want us to examine to, to deploy, um, unassigned fund balance as well. The reason the, um, the targets drop in 2026 is, as I mentioned before, they're a function of the upcoming year's budget. And with the general fund having made the cash financing for the fire station in 2026, we would actually expect, based on what we have in our fiscal plan right now, that our 2027 general fund budget may actually be a little lower than 2026 is because we're not doing that cash financing anymore. So you see those targets actually drop as a, as a function of that change. So to briefly get into levy then, um, in addition to appropriating the 2026 budget this evening, you're also being asked to approve a tax levy totaling $8,479,098. That's about a 1.4% increase from what was originally contemplated in November 2024. However, it is $91,000 less than what was originally contemplated in our Long Range Fiscal Plan. Um, the largest increase is here, it's just about a percent increase in our general fund and 4% increase, or about $52,500 in our capital funds is what, is what that represents. So then to discuss levy capacity, as you know, we operate under the state's levy limit program, meaning that we're restricted on how much we can increase our tax levy by from one year to the next. And it's a formula that the state, um, essentially forces all cities, municipalities, across the state counties as well, um, to follow. And so what this graph is showing is, uh, the orange is essentially what the focus of this slide is, is how much capacity we will have over the next several years in, under this levy limit program. Um, you see that capacity start to grow in 2027 and 28 and 29, um, for two, two reasons primarily. One is, it's our understanding in our fiscal plan discussions that you as a council don't necessarily want us to just levy to the max. Um, it's an option. We, we don't do that. The other is that anytime you take on general obligation borrowing, as we've discussed, but you have revenue sources paying for it, you essentially build some capacity under the formula in this program. So, some of our borrowing we contemplate doing in 2026 enables the city to gain some of that capacity then. And then because we're not levying to the max, we're, we're, we're actually gaining that capacity. We're staying that much further under the limit, um, for the next several years. Getting into mill rate comparisons then, um, when the fiscal plan was originally developed, we thought it would be about $5.82 per thousand dollars of property value. What's being proposed would be about $4.34 per thousand dollars of property value. There's two reasons for this. One is, we don't do, we don't have any new general obligation borrowings in 2025, um, period. Sometimes they're backed by the levy, sometimes, as I just mentioned, they're backed by revenue sources. In this case, we have neither of those happening this year. Um, so you do see that show up in the general oper, general obligation debt service portion of the mill rate. The other, the other piece is that we just went through a community-wide revaluation. So, whereas the tax levy, the gross increase of the tax levy, and we're gonna talk about that kinda gross versus net difference here in a second. But, um, when you get into the gross levy increase, um, you're being asked to approve about a 2.5% increase to the levy, um, not taking into account that growth component. Um, the average community-wide revaluation of all properties was somewhere in the 30 to 35% range, right? So you're essentially taking a number, a levy that increased by about 2.5%, and you're dividing into that a much larger number that increased by about 30 to 35%. So you're, just mathematically, you're going to end up with a lower mill rate. So, while folks' properties have gone up in value because of the revaluation, a lower mill rate's being multiplied into that number. Um, so, just as a reminder then, for the revaluation process, just because we did the revaluation alone does not necessarily mean your property taxes go up. Um, it kind of depends on whether you fell around the average that the community went up by. Did you come in lower? Did you come in higher? So those individual variations matter. Um, so then getting into the estimated city portion of tax bills, now I do have some new information this time that I did not have last time we discussed this. And that piece of information is the, is the TIF for the tax increment financing portion of that tax bill. So as you recall, um, the, uh, change from prior year taxes just for the city operations portion was almost $50 less, if you were an average home. Um, from last year's tax collection, or I'm sorry, technically, this year's tax collection to next year's tax collection, it was about $50 less with the TIF portion- With the TIF portion factored in, it's still almost, it's still about a two cent decrease. So the city portion of the tax bill for an average home with the TIF portion factored in is still about, it's a zero change for an average home. For the city operations portion, which is the budget you're being asked to approve, is still about a $50 decrease. So that difference is being made up for by that TIF portion of the tax bill, which is information I didn't have last time. We do have it now, so we're just at that point in the process. So then getting into planned borrowings for 2026, we are planning to borrow about $7 million for the fire station. This would be general obligation bonds, but as you recall, given the, I believe it's 2027 to 2046 agreement with the Rural Fire Association, we are collecting somewhere between $240,000 and $250,000 per year specifically for this fire station. So we'll still collect the operations portion from them that we always do, and we're collecting that additional amount for the fire station project. So that general obligation borrowing and the annual levy requirement to make the debt service payments on that will be offset almost in half by the Rural Fire payment. We also plan to borrow for the Lamedy Interceptor Phase 1 design and construction portions. We do contemplate that being, again, general obligation borrowing with the revenue source from the utility making the debt service payments on that. And then the Highview area electric improvements project for the electric utilities, you recall, that's just to enhance resiliency in the system. We do contemplate that being revenue bonds. Certain decisions, like maybe that would be general obligation bonds, do we borrow a little bit more for the fire station? Do we apply a little bit more cash to the fire station? Some of those decisions will be made in January or February of this year, once we kind of know where the year, fiscal year 2025 ends up. And like I mentioned, with winter, we're not quite sure what kind of snow we're going to get, things like that for snow operating costs, but we'll make some of those final decisions early in 2026. If we were to just do it today, that's what it would look like though, in terms of breakdown. So then for council actions, you're again being asked to approve $66,635,649 for fiscal year 26. You approve that budget by functional area and fund. So you're approving all of the bottom-line funds for all of the funds of the city, and then within the general fund, it would be by functional area, which is essentially we roll up different departments into functional groups, and you're approving the budgets by functional area in that case, providing authority to staff to implement the plan. As always, the council gets the opportunity to review bills and expenses consistent with our purchasing policy whenever applicable. And then you're also approving the tax levy for tax year 2025, collected in 2026, since we, as a reminder, we collect in arrears in Wisconsin, and that total is $8,479,098. That's a gross increase of 2.51% from this last tax year. And as we discussed, with growth in the community, that you're able to net that into your total tax bill increase. So because of the growth we've had, the state's formula says you're able to increase your tax levy by, we'll say, $220,000 because of that net new construction. The actual amount of the tax levy increase is actually less than that, which then means that the increase taxes to existing properties in the community is about negative .17% when you factor in that new growth. And that's the estimated increase to existing property owners. So then you're authorizing that tax levy on those taxable properties. And that is all I have.
Okay. So the public hearing is open, so if anybody on that says any questions on this? Otherwise, we'll close the public hearing and reopen up the council hearing, and I'll take a motion on this.
I saw move.
Second. Okay, first and second. Questions or comments for Josh? Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, we do have to do a roll call vote.
Oh, that's right. Sorry, finance.
Carol.
Yes.
Bjork.
Yes.
Morset.
Yes.
Biersted.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Page.
Yes.
Odine.
Yes.
Okay, knocks out close council meeting over the public hearing. This is the first reading on ordinance 2025-07 to reduce the speed limits on Powell and Cascade Avenues. Is there anybody in the audience has anything like to say about this? Yep, go ahead.
I don't know if this is appropriate at this time, but I'm still going to say it. Is there any chance you can add Winter Street onto that?
Not at this point.
Maybe consider for another time.
Thanks. Anybody else have anything? Otherwise, I'll close the public hearing and open up the council hearing. Does council have any questions?
I've got a question for staff, probably a combination of Mr. Simpson and the chief, if possible. So we probably are moving towards these reductions in speed, which I am in favor of. What are we going to do as far as letting the public know, educating the public? Would we be putting the speed trailer on both of these locations at some point, Chief? I would imagine we'll be flagging the new speed limit signs and then enforcement as necessary, all the above?
Enforcement would be last. Education's primary.
Yep.
Yes.
So we'd put the speed trailer out there? Okay. And the flags, yeah, that was kind of...
On the Cascade, we would likely coordinate with the university too, with their messaging system.
Okay. Very good.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I'd just like to thank our police chief and staff. This is very good. We need to look at other areas where we can reduce speed too. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have anything?
Just to note, Mayor, we're happy to do that, and we do have some of our own equipment to monitor traffic counts and look at things. We've got the speed trailers that have some limited capability to provide us good data to understand what the posted versus actual speeds, and then we certainly have a capable engineering department that can do. They do a lot of studying of different areas that police communicate. Members of the community communicate with us about areas, and then we'll review them. And as you know, we also don't just lower speed limits because we have a request. We're taking a look at what the perceived safety would be and some of the engineering calculations to do that. And these two cases, it bared out at this point, so that doesn't mean this is the last change to either of those sections, you know, they'll continually be looked at, although it's, they don't go much lower than 25, so Cascade might be there for a while.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, we'll move on to consent agenda. First thing is a resolution approving the extension contract for assessment services with accurate appraisal. Next one is a resolution referring an annexation petition for E.W. Homes Incorporated for property at the southeast corner of 160th Street and County Highway M, PID 101, or I'm sorry, 002010010200 and a portion of 002010010600 to the Plan Commission. And last one is a resolution approving the implementation of participation in the Wisconsin Service Award Program. Does anybody want to pull anything? Okay?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of consent agenda items four through six.
Second. Okay, first and second. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay. Under ordinances, resolutions, a resolution approving the planned unit development, general development plan for Wildflower Meadows and Emily, whoops, sorry, Emily Shively, our community development, is going to have a little presentation for us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Emily Shively, the Assistant Director of Community Development. So this is a brief presentation tonight on the changes to the Wildflower Meadows Planned Unit Development General Development Plan and preliminary plat that were made after council tabled the items and requested that staff work with the developer to address the park and lot sizes in the proposed neighborhood at the October 28th council meeting. As a reminder, JPB Land LLC has submitted these applications in order to build a new residential neighborhood. The proposed new neighborhood is located on the north side of Powell Avenue at North Winter Street, northwest of Collins Park. Working with staff, the applicant revised the plans with the following changes to address council direction. For park and open space changes, one single-family lot has been removed from the neighborhood to expand the park on Astor Avenue from 6,964 square feet to 13,214 square feet, nearly doubling the size of the centrally located park. The trail alignment in the northwest corner has been shifted northward to provide more distance between the proposed trail and the existing home at 69 West Woodridge Drive. The entrance to the trail corridor in the northwest corner of the neighborhood has been narrowed to accommodate changes in lot widths. It is still wide enough to accommodate emergency vehicles. For the lot size changes, now all homes on the perimeter of the neighborhood are 60 feet wide or larger. All lots on the perimeter of the neighborhood exceed the minimum lot size in the neighborhood, with many having increased lot depth to accommodate stormwater conveyance. The number of 50-foot minimum lot width parcels has been reduced from 22 lots to 17 lots, and of those, only six have exactly 50-foot lot width. All other lots have a greater lot width. And then all but two of the smaller single-family lots back onto nearly three acres of park and open space, providing public open space amenity in the areas with greater density. So having talked through these changes, the following slides illustrate these on the plans. So this slide shows the previous plat and the revised plat. The green ovals show where the park and open space changes have been made, and then the yellow rectangles show where the lot sizes have been changed from a minimum of 50 feet wide to a minimum of 60 feet wide. This slide shows the previous and revised neighborhood plan, again illustrating the areas of change to the park and lot sizes. This diagram also clearly illustrates the shift in the trail alignment in the northwest corner. And then here you can see that all of the homes on the perimeter of the neighborhood have the 60-foot or greater lot sizes. Those lots are shown in yellow, all the way here. The orange lots in the center are the lots that are less than 60 feet wide, and those are located surrounding the stormwater and open space and adjacent to the central park. And then you can see where one home lot was removed to make the park larger. This slide also illustrates the changes specifically to the park and open space areas. So you can see the narrowed trail corridor in the northwest corner with the realigned trail, and then the enlarged park space in the center of the neighborhood. With these changes, the developer is still committed to constructing the accessible play structure with surfacing and the central park amenities with the first phase of the development. So in summary, the proposed development now consists of a 92-unit neighborhood with 60 single-family homes and 32 twin homes. The proposed neighborhood will provide a diversity of housing types and styles that have been identified as needed and desired in the community. The developer is committed to constructing the park amenities such as the play structure, picnic table, bench, and 10-foot wide paved trail at the time of development of the first phase of the neighborhood to be ready to serve the residents right away. The city engineer has determined that the proposed roadways are consistent with city engineering standards for safety and functionality, and has no concerns regarding traffic, parking, or pedestrian safety, particularly given the provision of sidewalks on both sides of all streets and the two enhanced crossings of Powell Avenue. But in conclusion, staff has worked with the developer to make changes to the proposed neighborhood to address concerns and questions raised in the review process, while also meeting the goals of the comprehensive plan, the outdoor recreation plan, the bicycle pedestrian plan, as well as the housing need identified in the city housing studies and needs analysis and the recent St. Croix County Economic Development Housing Needs Assessment. I'm happy to stand for any questions. The applicant is also here if there are any questions, and with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
I'll take a motion first. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, first and second. Questions, comments?
I do have a couple of questions. From what I can tell, this current proposal does meet the city's comprehensive plan and other major plans, as mentioned. The deviation in code is supported by our city's comprehensive plan for this specific location, though, correct? That's what I thought. Thank you. And then my next question would be, does this current proposal support our safe streets goal for zero fatalities we have as a city? The future goal we have, what we're working towards?
Yep. So right now, we have, the council adopted a Vision Zero goal towards zero deaths and serious injuries. We're working on an action plan that'll look at specific locations, but as I noted, the city engineer said that this meets our standards for safety and functionality of our roadways.
All right. And then one last question. From my understanding, the density would be considered healthy density from what we're looking at. More cars in this sense actually helps bring down the overall speeding or speed problems, correct? That's been my understanding when I've looked at build-outs, right?
So one of the things where we allow parking on both sides of the street, if that occurs, that typically slows traffic.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Just a couple of questions. Emily, I apologize, I sent an email in today and I was late. I should have got it into you sooner, but I just want some clarification on two of the bullet points in the staff report. The first one says the number of 50-foot minimum lot width parcels has been reduced from 22 to 17, but then the next bullet point says only six lots in the whole neighborhood have a 50-foot lot width. So there's something probably in my brain that's misfiring, but can you talk about what you mean there? Because it doesn't connect for me.
Yes, I apologize for the confusion there. So of the 22 that are less than 60, only six are exactly 50 feet wide. The other 11 are between 51 and 60 feet. So we do have lots that are less than 60, but only six are exactly 50.
Okay. All right. And then the only other thing is, is that there was a question raised during public comment, and I think we can provide an answer for it, but, and I won't do this justice, so I'll ask you to kind of support me on this, but the R2 designation was assigned when the annex petition came back to the council from plan, and we decided the future land use, and at that time, based on the owner, they asked for R2 and we granted that. Is that correct? Or is that part of the process, or this is where you got to save me?
Sure. So part of the process during annexation is we apply a zoning classification, and when we do that, we look at the future land use map that's in our comprehensive plan, which designated this area for medium-density residential. And so the corresponding zoning district for that is the R2 medium-density residential. So yes, at the time of annexation, we applied that zoning district in conformance with our plans. The development partner that was coming through with the landowner agreed that that would work for what they were anticipating developing there.
So we had a comp plan, we followed our comp plan. Comp plan could be reviewed at the library or wherever, online, and we followed it.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything?
I have a question. And I'm sorry, it's a PUD, so are these going to be city streets or private streets? Will they have blue street signs or green street signs?
These will all be public streets, so they will have green street signs.
They will? Okay.
Yes, because this is now part of the city, since we've been next to...
But we have other PUDs that have blue signs, and then we're not responsible for certain things, but, yeah, okay. So we'll be responsible for snow plowing and everything else.
Anybody else have anything? Okay. So on resolution approving the planned unit development general development plan for Wildflower Meadows, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay, next is resolution approving the preliminary plat for Wildflower Meadows. Okay, next is a resolution approving the preliminary plat for Wildflower Meadows. I'll take a motion on this. So move.
Approval.
Second.
Emily, did you have anything you wanted to say about this? Okay. Anybody have any questions about this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we'll go on to comptroller's report with Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this is the comptroller's report for October 2025. General fund revenues through the end of October were 11,2745 dollars, or 82% of total budgeted revenues for the year. Revenues in October included $53,236 for building permits, $11,112 for vehicle registration fees, and $4,756 for court penalties and forfeitures. Expenditures through the end of October were $10,599,404, or 79% of total budgeted expenditures for the year. So as of October 31st, 2025, net revenues over expenditures were $403,341.
Diane, could you share again, what was the vehicle revenue? How much was that?
$11,112.
Okay, thanks.
That is, that's the extra fee that the city puts on vehicle registrations.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks, Dan. Okay, now, next we have the minister's report. If anybody has any questions for Scott?
Scott, if you have anything special to tell us? Well, I just wanted to appreciate the council. I understand the anticlimactic nature of our budget approvals, so you've gone through, you've gone through a number of processes to get where you are, including, you know, a couple decades now of long-range fiscal planning, and I think, I guess I'll, I'll emphasize a couple things that were already in Josh's presentation, but that you should take credit for. You're levying less than what you expected to levy in the fiscal plan. You're levying considerably less than the state would allow you to levy, which has become the standard. The maximum has become the minimum across the state of Wisconsin, and so this is a unique community where, where we are levying what we think we need to accomplish the services that you've established as priorities for the community, and so that, that is definitely unique. You also didn't increase the levy because of growth. You stuck with the levy that you thought was necessary to, to provide those services, and the growth that's been accomplished in the community has then helped reduce the burden to the rest of the taxpayers. So that's something that also is, is unique. It's likely that we'll, we'll continue to be in the bottom quarter of all tax rates in the state of Wisconsin. That has a significant impact on the folks that are paying the tax bills. We haven't really, we don't, we won't know until other cities set their, their rates, but certainly we've reduced the rate considerably as the community has grown, and another testament that you just haven't continued to tax at that level as growth has gone on. So that, those are pretty significant accomplishments. Been prudent with the money, which is going to give us a great opportunity for, for us fiscal nerds and local government nerds to be able to, using cash financing for long-term fiscal bonding just means that you're putting yourself in a position where future generations don't have as much of a debt burden on a service that they'll still be using. So certainly, we expect the fire station to be operating in 40 years, but by you kind of making a headway and paying that off well in advance of the useful life of the, the facility, we could continue to go on this, this kind of cascade of good news for debt service, which is going to really serve future generations that are, that are very eager to move into developments like you've approved tonight. So I appreciate the work of the council. Be happy to take any questions.
I'd like to ask, are the Wildcats going to win Friday night or not?
Yes, they're favored in at least one household in the city.
For those that don't know, the River Falls High School is playing in the state semifinals in football on Friday night against Green Bay Notre Dame in Schofield or DC Everest. Best of luck to the Simpson family and the Wildcats.
One thing I just guess I'd like to ask or point out in the community development report, and everybody's left now that, you know, I would have wanted to hear this, but Oak Hill has zero lots left. Is that correct, Amy? Emily?
Last month, yeah.
Okay, because in the report it says two permits issued, three COs issued, no lots left.
Oh, in the first, the first Oak Hill.
In the first, in the first Oak Hill.
Yes, that is correct, for the first phase of that neighborhood, which is the north end.
Okay.
Yes, they are completely full with building permits.
Okay, and that, that has 60-foot lots?
Correct.
Thank you.
410 units?
Perfect. Okay, so for good news, talking about sports already, it's been a good November for a few former River Falls athletes. River Falls High School grad Alex Call appeared in three World Series games for the Los Angeles Dodgers, who beat the Toronto Blue Jays in a thrilling seven-game series. And fellow River Falls High School grad Annie Frisbee, a professional runner, ran the fifth fastest time among women and the second fastest for American women in the New York City Marathon November 2nd, with a time of 2 hours, 24 minutes, and 12 seconds. So congratulations to both Alex and Annie, who represented River Falls spectacularly on the athletic stage. So congratulations to those guys.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
First and second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks to everybody. Thanks, guys. Great job.